Okay. All right, let's call this meeting to order. Kitts County Public Hospital, District Number One, a regular meeting. You all have a copy of the agenda. I believe we have supplemental agenda. I think we also have a couple additions in finance. Any additions or changes to the agenda before we approve it? Hearing none? Okay, moved by Roy, seconded by Diana. All right, any further discussion? All who are in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye. Consent agenda, good minutes to the last board meeting, approval checks, foundation report, financial report, and quality council. Anything to be pulled from the consent agenda? All right, hearing nothing. Motion to approve consent agenda. Motion by Eric, seconded by Roy. Any further discussion? All right, all who are in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Yes, thank you. All right. First item, then for tonight's meeting, is presentation by Rosika Steele, Kitteritt County Healthcare Lactation Consultants. For yours, welcome.
So, thank you guys for inviting me here tonight to share with you about the work I've been doing developing this lactation program for KVH. Before I start, I just want to take a minute and introduce myself because I haven't had the opportunity to meet a lot of you. My name's Rosika Steele. I've worked at KVH since 2009. I started as a patient care technician and worked here as I was going to school. I have a master's degree in natural and cultural resource management. And when I graduated, I continued working at KVH as a nursing assistant because I couldn't quite give up patient care. So, I transitioned into this role in 2017. I'm an international board certified lactation consultant and KVH has supported me through that process. I wanted to start a little bit more broadly about breastfeeding before getting into what we're doing here at KVH. So, the health benefits of breastfeeding are vast and well documented. In 2016, The Lancet published a study, meta-analysis, that revealed that improving breastfeeding practices could save as many as 820,000 child lives every year, the majority of those being under six months of age. Breastfeeding also reduces a woman's chance of developing breast or ovarian cancer. So, the same Lancet study estimates that approximately 20,000 breast cancer deaths are prevented each year by breastfeeding alone. In addition to the health benefits, there's also the psychosocial benefits of bonding between the mother and infant. There's reduced environmental impact as well as reduced financial burden on new families. So, due to the significant impact breastfeeding can have on public health, an objective of Healthy People 2020 was to increase the proportion of infants who are breastfed. So, you can see the targets here next to our current US rates. So, the Healthy People 2020 target for infants having ever been breastfed was 81.9% or is 81.9%. And our current rate is 83.2%. Currently, 57.6% of infants are breastfed at six months and 35.9% of infants are breastfed every year. And we're well on target and even exceeding targets in some places. But, when you consider that the American Academy of Pediatrics and the World Health Organization both recommend exclusive breastfeeding for six months, these numbers reflect that we still have a lot of work to do. So, exclusive breastfeeding through six months, we're only at 24.9% right now in the United States. There are disparities in breastfeeding rates. So, low rates of breastfeeding initiation and continuation are observed in minority groups, low socioeconomic status, young mothers, mothers with less than a high school education, and rural areas. So, infants born in rural areas are less likely to have ever been breastfed than infants born in urban areas. And we don't have a clear picture of a mother's breastfeeding experience in Kitts County right now. The data that we have at the county level is suboptimal. And so, I'll talk about what we're doing to address that in a little bit. Another objective of Healthy People 2020 was to increase the proportion of live births that occur in facilities that provide recommended care for lactating mothers and their babies. And the standard used to determine that if a facility meets this objective is designation as a baby-friendly hospital. So, currently, we're certified breastfeeding-friendly bronze and have been since December of 2016. It's a voluntary recognition program through the Washington State Department of Health. Their program is considered a stepping stone to baby-friendly designation. The Baby Friendly Hospital Initiative was developed as a joint effort between the World Health Organization and UNICEF in 1991. To become designated baby-friendly, you have to demonstrate that you've taken steps to promote the early initiation of breastfeeding as well as removing barriers that prevent mothers and infants from developing a protective breastfeeding routine. And most importantly is the development of an educational program and a system of support both in the hospital and in the community. The Baby Friendly Hospital Initiative has outlined 10 steps to successful breastfeeding and you can see those here in this colorful infographic in Word itself. These 10 steps help to guide hospitals to become centers of breastfeeding support in their community. And research supports that implementing these 10 steps improves breastfeeding rates and as a consequence, child health. Our current state at KVH, this graph shows you 2013 through 2018 of our exclusive breastfeeding rates. So, between 2013 and 2017, our exclusive breastfeeding rates have averaged just below 80%. Looking at 2018, 86% of mothers have exclusively breastfed at KVH. To remind you of the Healthy People 2020 target, it was 81.9% of infants ever breastfed. So, we're doing really, really well there. And we've exceeded the national average as well, which was 83.2%. And also, our own personal goal of 85%, so we're meeting all the goals. We are doing a lot of patient education. This is a really important component of the program. All mothers delivering at KVH have access to evidence-based information about infant feeding. And this information is delivered at multiple points during their pregnancy and postpartum through educational handouts, group classes, or individualized prenatal consultations. I also meet with everybody here during their inpatient stay and we'll see them as outpatient postpartum as needed. We will begin screening women prenatally using a breastfeeding self-efficacy survey, which helps identify women that have low self-confidence related to breastfeeding so that I can provide additional follow-up. A prenatal intake form will provide staff with more information about their infant feeding goals as well as their breastfeeding history, including any challenges they may have faced when breastfeeding a mother's delivery. Our goal is not that every mother choose to breastfeed, but simply that women are given the opportunity to make an informed decision and then whatever that decision is, we will support and encourage them to meet their goal. We've begun intensifying our staff training related to breastfeeding. We were awarded a grant through the CDC to implement a staff training program called the Empower Training Initiative. This was a competitive grant and was only awarded to 90 hospitals nationwide. We're the only hospital in the Pacific Northwest participating. The initiative is focused on improving knowledge and skills of maternity care staff by implementing evidence-based practices that are supportive of optimal infant nutrition. And the curriculum was designed to help facilities meet the training requirements of baby-friendly designation. So, we're participating in this initiative through September of 2019 and our goal is to have 100% of the maternity care staff trained in clinical skills to support breastfeeding mothers by next spring. We're also working in the community. So, we are a member of the Kitts County Breastfeeding Coalition along with other community members and agencies. For example, WIC and Bright Beginnings Central are all members of the coalition as well. Through the coalition, we will begin working with, or we're working with employers of breastfeeding mothers and childcare providers of breastfed infants to help them understand the kinds of policies and practices that they can implement to be supportive of breastfeeding mothers. And we're partnering with a public health professor at CWU to explore the possibility of performing a long-term community assessment. And this is going to give us a better picture of breastfeeding rates in Kitts County and it will help us understand the kind of challenges that mothers are facing so we can target them specifically to address those issues. We're also presenting the work that we're doing through the coalition. We've presented at the Northwest Council on Family Relations this year and we will be presenting at the Washington State Public Health Association's forum. We recognize the value of breastfeeding support to the families we serve and its impact on our community's public health. So, to remove barriers that prevent mothers from seeking care lactation support is offered free of charge at KVH. We are developing a system of ongoing support. So, we provide telephone and in-person follow-up as needed. And then, we work closely with providers in the local WIC office to ensure community care. We're also partnering with community groups such as the Lila Chevi in Kitts County, which is a breastfeeding support organization. We are hosting a breastfeeding group once a month. It's open to all mothers and their children. It's held at twelve homes, we're calling it the Milk Bar. And mothers can come there, meet other mothers, get advice from their peers. And then, myself and the Lila Chevi leader are there to provide evidence-based information and still support as needed. And support is critical. High breastfeeding initiation rates show that most mothers in the United States want to breastfeed and start out doing so. However, despite the recommendation to breastfeed exclusively for the first six months, less than 50% of infants were exclusively breastfed at three months and about 25% were exclusively breastfed at six months. So, these rates suggest that mothers may not be getting what they need from healthcare providers, family members, and their employers to meet their breastfeeding goals. So, the goals of our program are that all mothers have access to education about breastfeeding, about how breastfeeding may impact their personal health and community well-being, that all mothers are supported in meeting their goals for infant feeding, whether it be feeding a breast substitute or extended breastfeeding. We want to promote a culture that normalizes breastfeeding. And ultimately, we want the work that we're doing here to be a model for other hospitals that are developing lactation programs. Just a side note, that all babies that were pictured in this presentation were not only born at KVH but were breastfed in Kitts County. Can I answer any questions for you?
I have a couple. I was struck by the disparity between the group that breastfeeds more and more exclusively and the group that doesn't. And you describe the group that uses breastfeeding less as minority groups, less educated people, rural, working. Why is there that disparity? What explains that?
So, breastfeeding is widely accepted as a biologically normal thing to do, but it's far from the culturally normal thing to do. So, that is a big aspect of why some groups have lower breastfeeding rates. But, it's also access to care and access to information is a huge one as well.
So, did they break down like working moms or non-working moms? I mean, that's really, I mean, that's a big difference, right?
Yeah, yes. And that's something that we're hoping to get out with the community assessment that we're working on doing with Central. Where, so what we're planning on doing is sending out a survey at six months and 12 months postpartum and asking if they're a student or if they're working, how much they're working, and whether they receive a breast substitute, if their employers were supportive and provided them with a place to pump a reasonable break time to do that, to see if we can correlate reduced breastfeeding rates with support from their employer as well as such additional questions related to family support and things like that.
I had a question related to that. You said that you were working with employers and childcare providers. How, what are you doing with employers? Are you encouraging them to allow for those breaks or have breastfeeding meetings or?
Yeah, so, the lead on that through the coalition works at the public health department. And so, we're working on putting together a packet for employers that has things like tips for how to be supportive with a mother, sample policies that you can put forth in your organization that support mothers. And these are all following the laws that support them as well, that they need to be provided with reasonable break time and a clean place to pump at, it's in a bathroom. These are all legal requirements, so they're helping them understand those laws and find the best way to implement them in their facilities. Because it's not always easy, especially if there's not really a good place to do that. You know, you have to convert to positive or you don't have a lot of influence. Teachers in particular are having a lot of struggles fighting that break time, waitstaff. Those are jobs that don't make it easy to find technical. And then, with childcare providers, we're working on developing a training that will hopefully satisfy their STARS requirement, which is continuing the credential requirement of childcare providers that discusses some of the differences between a breastfed infant and a formula fed infant and their feeding patterns and some techniques that you can use when bottle feeding, when they're with their mother to be supportive and not wasteful of the breast milk because it is a big job to light up the.
Okay, go ahead, I'll go.
No, no, I was just agreeing with Matt, I also mother the same.
Go ahead.
What defines exclusive?
Nothing but breast milk.
Well, what happens if you're taking a baby on the train and you run out? Or you're somewhere where you can't breastfeed and the baby needs a feeding. So, if you one-time gave it a bottle, would that be non-exclusive then?
If it was a breast milk substitute, yes. But, if it was express breast milk, then it would still be considered exclusive.
I've seen breastfeeding areas set aside on airports.
Think about traveling and having to travel for work. And if you are pumping, where do you store that breast milk while you're gone? And you have to get it back through TSA and that's a challenge as well. Because that's way more than a two-down. So, there's a lot of challenges to that.
When I was at the birth center a while back, I asked the CDC about the designation of exclusive breastfeeding, specifically if a child needs supplemental carbohidrin for hyperglycemia. And I can't remember, does that disqualify them from being exclusively breastfed? Breastfed if they get SWEEDs and that sort of thing?
The SWEEDs don't count. The SWEEDs are, would be, SWEEDs are okay if it's for pain. If we're supplementing the baby for hyperglycemia, we're using a formula for that or IV?
Oh, is that a newer policy?
Yeah, so maybe, oh, ways back depending on, you know, the AAP has guidelines now for if you have a baby that falls into the hyperglycemia algorithm, then we supplement them with a formula. If they fall below a certain level, then we'll move to an IV. So, JCO has some guideline on what would exclude someone from that exclusive breastfeeding mix. And so, if it's an IV, that's excluded because that's not really necessary. If they fall into the AAP guidelines for hyperglycemia, even though we are using the approved protocol in supplementing the formula, then those babies are, they are fallout. But, Rosika is working with now with moms now that are sort of prenatal portion of this, recognizing those moms that are gestationally diabetic and maybe working a bit ahead of time to pre-express milk so that if they do need to supplement the baby and they feel they're very passionate and want to express the recipe, they have that milk on hand when they do that.
This is also a problem, is like, you got to, yeah.
The staff always prioritizes the mother's warm milk before supplementing the formula too. So, they would try to express about, um, that person, maybe that extra supplement.
So, Mandy, is this goal, the 85% goal, the source of the goal on the?
That's, yeah, that's the same, that's the same.
On the access education, where is it being provided? Who's providing it?
So, we're working right now to put the finishing touches on some flyers, educational handouts that'll go to women at three different points during their pregnancy. And at 30 weeks, that's when the mother gets the breastfeeding self-efficacy survey as well as the intake form. And then, they have the opportunity to say they'd like more information on that form. And I can call people who also, if they scored really well on the breastfeeding self-efficacy, to check in with them and see if they want additional information. So, we have a just breastfeeding class that we started as well as the breastfeeding component of the childhood class that they teach. And then, women can come in for an individual consult if they would prefer to do that. Especially at a second time mom, that maybe didn't meet her goal the first time. They want to kind of talk through some things that happened, that's what I foresee.
Do you also make home visits to provide the education?
I would love to. There's a bit of a barrier with insurance there. So, we do urge people to reach out to their other community resources though. There are two women who will open your home free of charge to provide lactation support. So, we refer to them.
This is really fantastic because we strive for community wellness, well-being. This is such a critical component. Starting on the right foot, whatever possible, through pregnancy, this is the other way.
Yeah, great.
I just have one little tiny question. A little English teacher and me comes out. In the UNICEF brochure, it describes number three as antenatal care. Why not prenatal? What's the difference? I mean, you see what I'm saying? The number three example, anti, like antebellum is before the war, antenatal would be before the birth.
Yeah, we use those terms simultaneously, prenatal and antenatal. So, anytime before, during her prenatal period, like?
Yeah, I understand that.
Yes, I don't know why they didn't, yeah.
I mean, two years, it could stand like antenatal.
Or like, you know.
It's more European.
And it's because it's a World Health Organization as well, so they, you know.
I feel like that's sort of.
Yeah, uh-huh, yes.
I suspect it has to do with whether the root natal was Latin or Greek. And I suspect the more appropriate answer is antenatal.
Well, if someone doesn't like going to get the OED, I'll continue that discussion. Any further discussion or questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very good presentation.
Yeah, very good, thank you. And I assume that, if you may, would you mind sending a copy of the PowerPoint to the? Yeah.
Can I just send Mandy me to her?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, now it's time for public comments and announcements. If anybody would like to make a comment, please keep it to about two minutes and say your name and your address so that we can have a look at it. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment? Okay, thank you. All right, next then we have reports and dashboards. We start with Quality, Maggie Olson.
Okay, so, after what's there, I don't want to give any questions, but then I was going to give you kind of a summary of our department of health service.
So, would you like people to ask any questions about the dashboard or anything else before you go?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay. So, you guys have had a chance to look at the QI reports, the minutes from the meeting. If you'd like to answer the meeting, thanks for your work.
Well, I don't think the minutes, because it just happened on Monday. We don't have them in the work ethic yet. It was that, but you're not actually.
Oh, yeah, this is pretty much all I have. Well, that's fine if. That was.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, all right.
We're finding it's fallen.
Okay, got it. All right, so, any questions about the QI reports, dashboard? I think we mentioned this maybe at last month's meeting, if we didn't. QI Council is going to at the end of this calendar year be talking about the dashboard, what sort of metrics we want to include, how we want to kind of measure that and report to the board on this stuff. So, we'll be kind of talking about broader issues in the next QI Council meeting. So, that's, that's one thing that's kind of on the table for future meetings. Any questions about the dashboard or the QI?
Would you flash sterilization?
Have a try?
Yeah. Like this, is this a very hot, this?
Well, yeah, it's back in this room and it's like, imagine like a big dishwashing area of a kitchen, right? I mean, so there's these things that are heating things to high temperatures and washing them. And so, it can be very, very hot back there.
I don't know the main point, I suppose.
Yeah, there's a lot of different styles too, so.
And the reason we want to minimize the use of flash sterilization is because it is unpleasant environment?
No, no, it's that there's, so, I might need someone to help me describe this. Not that, but I think Dave is coming next month.
Dave's worried that it's lead in central sterilization.
Yes. But, the flash sterilization is like the kind of emergency way to quickly sterilize the instruments instead of the normal process they use. And so, you want to really only do it when you need to emergently or quickly.
Probably slightly higher.
Yeah, I think it's slightly less reliable than the other process.
Ideally, they would all listen to the system and it would all go instantly.
So, one of the things they did was they purchased more, like if we don't have very many sets, sets of certain types of surgical sets and something happens and they have to re-sterilize it because we don't have another set, they'll flash sterilize it. So, one of the things that has been done over the past few years is they have purchased more sets. But, I think for some of the total joint procedures, the vendors are bringing some of those instruments in. So, it's not like we have extra ZEPMA. So, they're really trying though to decrease it. And I think it was, they had done flash sterilization like 40 times last year. Oh, it's right around the graph. Yeah, we're down to three times. I think it's four now, the times that it's been done. Yeah. You'll have to double-check my answers. I am not the expert.
My question's my curiosity, Prudence.
Oh, yeah, it's interesting. He's a very good, he's really great at explaining the process though. And when the surgeons come though, they love observing and he really has a great program, so.
Could you explain a bit on this sepsis, the improvement opportunities? You say sepsis numbers from May and June may still change due to some charts that strike recently open. So, this is the idea that we just don't have all the data, yeah?
Yes, there's a process concern the way we abstract the data. So, go through and say, did we do this or that or this? So go through and say, did we do this or that or this? And when you close the abstraction, it puts it in the report. So we're still learning a little bit about our reporting capabilities and where we find information in the chart. And so Anna had not completed all of the reviews for those months. So they weren't included in the data that Amy pulled. She was trying to see if she could find anywhere a couple pieces of documentation skills where we wouldn't have failed to measure. But we probably will have, I think, two failures somewhere due to lactate climbing. It's very similar.
Are there questions about the quality improvement report for the QI council dashboard?
Well, we got a really superb presentation at QI council on Monday about the family birthing place. It was a PowerPoint presentation that Stacy and Jacinda and Mandy.
And Linda.
And Linda presented to the group. I was so impressed that I suggested that we not be able to have the same presentation somewhat taken up. Lord, I'm Eric. So I think that will happen in the future.
Yeah, sure. Sound good? Yeah, all right, sure. Any other questions regarding the quality improvement report or dashboard before she?
I do want to point out though in my report that I included some patient comments, stories or. And well, and I just want to point out that there was one about Rosika who was here and what service it comes for that person. I thought it was a really meaningful statement.
And relevant to what we talked about earlier? Any additional questions concerning this? All right, Mandy, go ahead.
Okay, so and I'm gonna have Ron help me out a little bit. But on August 7th, the day after I talked about surgery readiness at a cross-functional headroom, said, oh, we made it past Monday, they won't come now. They, the Department of Health showed up to do our hospital licensed survey. That happens every 18 months. So I had that they were due on 14th, not, you know, the week before. But they had three surveyors with them. The lead is a public health professional who looks at the environment of care. We have an RN who looks at the quality and continuity of care and a fire and life safety. The deputy fire marshal comes. And they spent three days with us, the fire marshal a little less time. They look at our policies, they renew charts, they interview staff, they observe procedures. And for the most part, Vicky, Ron and I, you know, walked through them throughout the facility as well as tons of other staff. So they particularly spent a lot of time with the crop staff, but a lot of, they spent a lot of time with our staff. So I just thought I'd have Ron kind of summarize the fire and life safety findings and then I'll talk about the other findings.
So there was 21 findings and most of those were pretty minor in nature. Excuse me, 11 of those are complete already. And we expect to have all but one of them complete by urgent date, which is on 1/15. So the two, there's two significant ones. And one of them is they got us on not having 96 hours of fuel for the generators. And so we're pretty much going to have to get some more fuel storage there. There's some things that didn't catch on that that it was solved at the same time.
How long is doing?
Wasn't it off by less than an hour or something?
Well, yeah, but we were off by 1,000 gallons of what we thought tanked. So we're probably at 48 hours, we're in there. And so, but anyhow, we have one single tank that serves the boiler and it also serves the generators and they, they don't allow that being a separate source. So when we do this, we'll be able to.
We did not decide to do that.
We did not.
So, but that correction will be able to make while we make this.
And while we're at it, we'll look at generator sizing. I'm not quite sure how we are at that right now. I'll figure that out. But we'll look at that to see if we need to, you know, upside it for future.
And which, you said there was a second major issue?
Yeah, the other one was in imaging the dressing rooms, they have, there's six dressing rooms and it's kind of a, six rooms within a room. And those rooms have just pony walls that go up. Well, they go up within like 12 inches of the ceiling and there's just one sprinkler head in there. So you're supposed to have 18 inches clearance from the bottom of the sprinkler head doing the instructions.
And you said that there was one issue that we wouldn't be able to resolve at the deadline. Is one of those two, I take it?
It's the fuel tank, yeah.
Fuel tank.
So just, I'm sure the lead time on that to get into the engineer, get into technology now. So we can finally extend some of this technical process.
What, did they not have that finding last time they were out or did they?
It's kind of a rule that they've been enforcing now. So in previous surveys, if you didn't have 96 hours, you kind of have a plan how you're going to work around that. Maybe it was in agreement with the oil vendor from the east and one from the west or something so that you could get your fuel supplies. So, but with the 2012 code that they're enforcing now, they're sticking to the 96 hours on the side.
And that, that does happen. Where CMS or the Department of Health or Fire Marshal don't have a kind of renewed focus on certain codes depending on the findings of other years. They explain, they explain that to us.
And that's the case with the sprinklers as well, nothing's changed.
So how do you, do you cut the pony balls down by six inches? Is that still enough for pregnancy?
No, I think the plan is just to put more heads in there.
Okay.
It's not a finding, although we talked about it when we went through the fire marshal, but we have quite a few heads that are at replacement date. And so that's just an upcoming cost that we'll have. It's not a finding.
And she did say that she was so impressed and it's such a nice facility. She did also say that.
She did.
So they, you know, they're gonna find some things and they always do. On the quality of care, continuity of care side, we had four findings. They were about care coverage in the OR area, hand hygiene, before and after gloving, cleaning reusable items between use, like stethoscopes. So wiping off the stethoscope before and after you use it on a patient. And then making sure that all of our employees who should be fitted for mask fits, for the N95 masks, so that's what you need to wear if there's like a TV outbreak, that they were fitted for that annually. So we had a couple employees who hadn't had that done in the last year.
Can I talk a little more about like the hand hygiene? Are they looking at information from past cumulative information or is this?
It's from observation.
Observation?
On the good side, so the environment of care surveyor saw no hand hygiene. Were no issues with hand hygiene. And he was surveying all the housekeeping staff, he was also in nursing areas, just observing staff in general. He was back in the kitchen. We usually do have some sort of finding in the kitchen of like a temperature problem or, you know, scoops inside a whole bin that aren't supposed to be there or something. There were no findings for nutrition services or housekeeping, which I think is really exceptional. And so, yeah, the hand hygiene was just more, we have a policy that says you do it in this instances and it's like failure of quality on policy. So between changing gloves.
So it's the absence of that keeping place, not necessarily just a technique lapse, but it is like it didn't happen.
Didn't happen.
Were people aware of it being audited? So it's perhaps just a misunderstanding of when it's, they thought they were doing it right.
Absolutely hand hygiene. There's, the issue with care coverage has been a challenging issue.
Right, the inspector did observe that there was possibly an element of nerves. There's one nurse was observed gelling while wearing gloves.
And it is nerve wracking. They did observe, I think, the very first day of wound care and they said they did exceptionally. But they asked to see their policies. They, he says, these are draft. And they said, well, we still want to see them. And they gave us a lot of kudos for the wound care program and what they.
They were back there for an hour and a half.
Yes, with some, I think the one staff, was it the first day?
That's the one, that's the one who gelled.
So it is nerve wracking, it really is. And even the kitchen staff said, oh my gosh, that was, that was nerve wracking. And they did a great job, so.
So who's not supposed to be fit for a N95 mask?
It's based on our policy. We get to decide that. We, they said kudos to us for being so protective of our staff and including areas like the registration desk where people will come in and present. But the broader you are with who you decide to include that policy, then the harder it is to adhere to it. So that is one of the things they said you could change, is looking at who you've determined must be fit tested or not, so.
And everyone gets a reminder on their birthday month. So everyone's, let's go remember. And we do a good job.
Well, yes, and, and we've actually done a lot better than, it's, it's a struggle for everyone. It's not, it's not just us that struggles with that. Some people say, okay, we'll go only to pappers. But then there are some people that really can't tolerate a papper. They're claustrophobic or they just, they can't tolerate it. So we'll, we'll figure it out. We've already met their, the Ron's issues. There's always, there's already ones where we've revised the policies already. Dr. Penoyer has stepped up to be a physician surgeon champion to help the surgeons back in the OR with care coverage and that. And then our plan of correction for each of these items is due within 10 days of preceding this. So next Wednesday, we have to postmark that plan correction and then a period of time to correct that.
Any questions, Mandy, or? Do they come, do they come through here?
No, every 18 months.
18 months.
And this was our survey for the state hospital, our licensure with Department of Health. We also are surveyed for the, our conditions of participation as a critical access hospital with CMS. This was our second state licensure survey in a row. So they told us that it's not been confirmed or put out by CMS, but they've been given signals that because of staffing issues at different state levels that the critical access hospital survey would probably only be happening every five years. But again, that's not been, you know, released or that was what, because he was confused why he was doing two in a row, two that were state licensed surveys.
What do you mean two in a row?
Usually they'll do one then the other. They'll do the licensure survey, then they'll come back and they'll do the CH survey. And they, so twice in a row, we've had it through the licensure.
And CMS contracts with Department of Health, it's the same people to do this survey. So it can be.
Right, yeah. So, and, and I guess Julie brought up hypothetically, they could come back for 18 months and do the critical access hospital.
If I leave town again, I think she's.
Julie, she was gone too. But I, I think it, it shows how hard work we do every day too. CEO can be gone, infection prevention is can be gone and so we, you know, perform well.
Great, sounds good. Sounds like you're on top of the issues that. Any other questions coming? All right, thank you, Mandy. All right, under the CEO report, do you have?
Okay, so the construction update is on schedule and on budget on our projects. Terry Barr, who's out sick today, is leading on the MAP2 with a larger MAP project. She is the design and inspection team, so that work is underway. I did want to mention that as we look forward, we anticipate that at the end of September we'll be relocating folks out of the 309 building. So I received the update from Randy Kaiser today. They did a walk through and I think Ron did either there.
Yeah.
So there are going to be some modifications necessary to the 309 building. And they are on notice that those are going to be very minimal and minimize those modifications. So they're working with KDF, they'll need things like a housekeeping profit and dirty running and things like that. They're going to minimize that and we should know more about that soon. The idea is that we'll vacate the old medical office building on second and bring speech and occupational therapy up so that we have ETO being speech also located on that. We anticipate, talking to Bill and to Marcus, that it will be more fluid than that. So we'll have PT and OT, we'll have the therapists themselves traveling back and forth between the buildings. So more to come on that. We should have an estimate on the cost of the next one. We would like to have that transition completed in early December, so get those therapists off of second. I have been contacted, and I just wanted to confirm with the board, Hospice Friends is interested in leasing that space on second for us. We don't have a need, clinical need for it and we take substantial upgrades in order to qualify it for any clinical needs. So Hospice Friends is certainly an opportunity to move in there. They're, we're still working, we work very, very closely with them and we want to support their mission. The crew's still on Main Street here.
I missed, you said substantial, something, it would take substantial.
It would take substantial upgrades to take speech and OT to a place where they could use it for a clinical.
So you said this is a, I mean, it's not only can we support their mission, but we don't think that.
I, yeah, I think it's a great gesture for availability part of some of the work that. I believe there are lease supports they ended the year, so we're trying to make sure that we accommodate and move to them.
Yeah, I mean, I assume that the board is supportive of that.
Oh, absolutely. Early location, early wires.
Sounds great.
It's a nicer building and again, I just think it might of course be a strategy department collaborating. And we already loaned them Robb to be on the board. I wanted to give you a quick update on the DSA sets, please. They are in sustained being out in just a couple of weeks, so the first and second floor, which is good since I haven't seen a signed copy of the placement and occupancy. So they will be. The third floor, they will be occupying until the end of the year. But the first and second floor, of course, we have. So we should be able to move ahead with that. That's it on construction. Any questions? And I asked Ron to sit where I'm sitting, if he could answer any questions.
Any questions specifically about the construction project?
I did want to give you a quick update on activities in District 2. We had a meeting on Monday and they're. They pretty much completed their site plan, their master site plan. They have prioritized their ambulance garage as the number one priority. They, I'm working with KDF to put together a pre-designed contract for them to look at both a four bay ambulance garage that would accommodate their current needs and then also an alternative that would add additional square footage for partnering with people like search and rescue and that building. And they've also asked Libby to do some research on an additional $1.25 million debt to accommodate this, this project. So it feels like we're getting some really good money. And since we have a brand new ambulance on order, we'll need some rest.
Can this roll through halfway?
Yes, it's all on that same site that we got the site plan included for. I also wanted to remind you as we sort of close out Phase 1 of implementation Cerner and RNE DHR, we had committed to a Phase 2 of that to look at, and we held a pretty firm line with Cerner only products. We have a couple of places identified, like with First Health and the Wound Care, where another product might be necessary. So we're starting the process of going back through those two departments and looking at what options we may need to provide. That'd be part of the 2019 planning. And again, looking at, at the. looking at the load of work that IT will have to speak to that.
Do you mean another product instead of, or in addition to Cerner?
Well, usually instead of. So like in the case of Workplace Health, it's really important you be able to isolate the results of a patient who comes in at an employer's request. So if I have a provider here on campus, and my, somebody sends me down for a free employment drug test, those results do not belong in my medical record. Those are not, those should be kept separate. Right now, Cerner does a really good job as one source, which means it makes it really difficult. So we achieved our goal, and now we need to put ink in that. With, in the case of wound care, there's essentially a healing product that makes it, that's really, really slick at measuring the wound as it heals and improves, and Cerner just isn't, isn't adequate to that. So we'll be, we need like that.
Is there a hope that at least for wound care, that another option would play well with Cerner, or?
Yeah, will be like, it may.
The option we're looking at does play well with Cerner, but it's an add-on to it. So it's called tissue analytics is the one we look the most at. Basically, they have hooks to all major EHRs, but they provide a lot of documentation and measurement tools, and specifically are very, very good at integrating photographs and analytics into the documentation. And that's just a capability that doesn't exist with Cerner.
But are you able to scale that by size of facility, or is it, you get everything, or?
It's based on volume, the pricing is based on volume.
It's a pretty... And again, we were pretty tough on people. We had a lot of people who, you know, said they were, it's very unique and impossible to, you know, work with Cerner. And they went through the implementation, and by and large, they came out being other end of the very, very door of opening for this product. So we, it's time to go back and keep faith with that promise and talk to the people who really do need to change.
Was Home Health and Hospice that grew?
They don't want to change.
They don't want to right now.
There was a concern that Cerner wasn't going to work, but now it will?
Cerner does not have a home health. And they gave us a credit on that purchase.
Cerner may or may not come out with a home health hospice module anytime real soon now, we promise. But kind of the, in the process of getting ready for Cerner, or I guess the recognition that we weren't going to Cerner, Home Health and Hospice leadership has done a great job of figuring out how to use the product we have, so that it's actually become a viable alternative to Cerner, and frankly, right now, superior to, they make Cerner, superior to anything Cerner has to offer.
So they'd ask to be left alone until different markets. And the last thing I wanted to talk about is Libby's still quitting, and now, and now she's, she's getting her retirement. She's getting a little bit of an attitude. We've asked, she's getting harder and harder to work with. So we've asked Carrie Youngblood to bring us timeline and talk about what that process is.
Yeah, it's pretty quick, but, yeah, it's their big shoes to fill. But we took the opportunity to post this big, soon to be vacant vacancy, August 1st. And just since August 1st, we've actually received over ten candidates for this position, which is really pretty stellar. From, so we posted at eight one, our first step was to do some video interviews, screening interviews of these candidates. I've had an opportunity to screen about five candidates already. The last one, just literally as I was walking in this evening to be here. Of those five candidates, we'd like to bring back two, or possibly more, hopefully next week, for some site visits and face-to-face interviews. We have a target start date of ten one. So that's our goal. Hopefully, if all the plans align and whatnot, that would be a great opportunity for both the incoming and the exiting to have an opportunity to overlap and work on a bunch of our projects. Part of that face-to-face interview process, though, I know we would like to have some board participation on that. I thought I was gonna see that hand go up and...
The two members of the finance committee had already committed to be there, assuming we're available.
Absolutely. So I'll be reaching out to you immediately to talk about your schedules, get the CDs in front of you to talk about process, so.
Here's a question. I certainly appreciate the importance of having a new person overlap with Libby for like the time, but six months, that's loose.
So the intent, first of all, Libby has planned an extended vacation, I think, but, Libby, we have reorganization that's going to be going on in the revenue cycle, and we just wonder leadership change there. We have not felt that.
We have not felt that, definitely.
So, yeah, the, the plan is to bring a new person on board with Libby on general CFO work for a month or so. And then we'll be into the holidays and all of that. But towards the end of her tenure here, Libby would actually slide over the revenue cycle and start working with that reorganization and filling in, and really getting into some of the details. We talked about finance, and we're clear about how claims are being managed, I think. So she'll be filling that role. This is a chance to really find the right candidate to run that. And I, there's a lot of reassignment reorganization needs going in revenue cycle. So I think having her here to answer questions and, but up a radio hill so that our new CFO can, will start running finance and getting understanding of finance will be a useful thing.
Yeah, so it sounds like there won't be a lot of duplication.
That sounds like a...
I'll stay on her way.
A really good plan.
And we'll take her place. No, but she, we won't get someone started by October 1st, so.
Don't say that. You never know.
That's scary.
You actually spend that.
We won't go.
I hope you have to, yes.
Any questions for Carrie, or any additional points in your report, Julie? Any other questions?
Do you want to contact us by phone, or text, or email?
I'll probably contact you via email, if that works. I'll contact you by email through your EHR account.
Would you contact me on my personal account instead?
I suppose so.
Oh, yeah.
Can I?
No.
No.
Why not?
I just, I'm hearing a voice behind me saying no. I would be happy to get the information to you, however you feel.
Yeah, you can just come.
Absolutely.
Mandy has my address. I use my KTH email. I go into it often, but I have a backlog of stuff I need to read, and I'm afraid I'll miss it.
KTH email's fine.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And Bob America, are you comfortable with?
Sure.
All right, good. Just one thing that is, I mean, I don't think it hurts to mention here. Carrie's been very good. She was very prompt in giving Bob the knee materials review on the CEO evaluation. So we are just in the process, we're in the process of reviewing that, and any delays because of our stock. So that's, that's what's going on. Okay. Thank you, Julie. On to staff, Jesus Staff, Dr. O'Ryan?
Yeah, you have on this, providers here. There are five initial appointments, pretty straightforward. Lee Jackson, a nurse practitioner that was previously at Clayall Street, is coming down with family medicine now for KTH. Kocik is from breath radiology, a remote radiology leader. Sri Pavlo already is more steratology. Vanessa Ting is, and Stephen Rodan, they're both with Virginia Mason Telestore. And we are recommending these initial provisional appointments as listed. Secondly, under reappointments, I want to separate Iron Haney under a separate category. Considering the other four, Nina Schultz, a allied health professional, KTH IM. Chandler Matadeen Ali is our remote reader of sleep studies, who's located in Pennsylvania. Frank Cruz, our EED doc, and Donald Orminsky is a podiatrist that has previously done some work here, but not recently, but he still wishes to redo his appointment for two weeks. And we're recommending you approve those. There are no significant issues in their files or experiences. Lastly, Iron Haney, we have some deficiencies in...